Twenty-one Vernon Hills Village Board Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
President Byrne, Trustees Markport.
Here.
Forster.
Here.
Oppenheim.
Here.
Cook.
Here.
Takaoka.
Here.
Schenck.
Here.
We have a quorum. We also need a motion to appoint a president pro tem.
I'd like to appoint Trustee Cook to be president pro tem in this meeting.
And I will second it.
Motion second. If there's no further discussion or questions, roll call, please.
President Byrne, Trustees Markport.
Aye.
Forster.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Schenck.
Aye.
Mr. President, congratulations.
Motion carries. All right. So we are called to order and we've had our roll call. So would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any citizens that wish to address the board on something other than what's on the committee of the hall? Or anything that's on the agenda tonight? Yeah, come on up, please.
Good evening. My name is David Taylor. Many of you know me. I've lived here in Vernon Hills. It's been my privilege to live here in Vernon Hills for thirty years. My wife and I moved here in nineteen eighty-eight and got one of the first houses built in, at the addition, the Ghost Point. And we've lived there ever since. We are moving to Burlington, Wisconsin later this, either this month or next. And so I thought I'd come and just say goodbye and tell you how much I enjoyed being in Vernon Hills all this time since nineteen eighty-eight. And just to share some of the things that, just a couple, and I won't take much of your time, is that the two probably biggest things that's happened since I've been here has been the Nike base. That's now, that's now apart, which is wonderful, and the Cuneo. I always wondered why the Cuneo was the name of the place when Insel, the guy that started electricity, who was a huge historic figure, because he, he started ComEd, which I guess some of you may or may not know. But, but Insel started Commonwealth Edison at the turn of the century. And I always wondered why Cuneo got all the credit. Well, because everybody that, that worked here, everybody that lives here dealt with Cuneo all the time. And I guess he was a wonderful man. I never met him. But he, this village owes a huge debt to Cuneo. And I'm sure you will, you, you in your position all know that. Just one other thing that just seems weird, and, and maybe you don't think it's weird, but it is, it is not, everybody points out. WW Granger is not far from here. And it, it serves for years, for years. I mean, more than thirty years. WW Granger, every maintenance man in a, or we have maintenance women now, but maintenance man in industry, no matter what factory you're in, you have a WW Granger book. And that's, and I've worked in manufacturing all my life. And I, when I said, oh, that's where WW Granger, what a wild thing that is, because that is a huge, huge company in manufacturing. When I got here, I discovered that Medline does the same thing for the medical industry. CDW does the same thing for the computer industry. And American Hotel Registers does the same thing for the hotel. And they're all right here. And I don't know why, but that's, that's one of those puzzles that makes life interesting.
Pleased to be.
Well, anyway, I've really enjoyed my stay here in Vernon Hills. I, I hate to leave. I'm going to Burlington, Wisconsin. I'm going to live on five acres. I got deer in my backyard. And, and all, as wonderful as Vernon Hills is, I can't wait, I can't wait to get out of here. Thank you very much. I, I just, I know many of you. And I just wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you to all you folks who helped run this place. And this is probably one of the best cities and best towns in the, in the whole country, maybe in the world to live in. And I really, really, really believe that. Okay? Thank you.
Well, make sure you do. Dave, you have to make sure you come back and visit us because now we're going to have to, Mark, make sure that we take his name off the roll. Because we wouldn't start a, a meeting until, you know, it was checked off on the, on the roll. Trustee Markport. Well, I just want to say the door is always open. So you're always, always welcome to come back and visit with us. So please do. Trustee Oppenheim.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, but also we're going to miss you. You're a fixture, Mr. Taylor. Here, some meetings where there wasn't much else going on, there'd be no one in the audience except for you. We can count on you to, to attentively listen to all of our dealings, interesting or not. And appreciate the, the history lesson as well. Sorry that American Hotel Registry is, is no longer. But yeah, I think I mentioned one of the meetings a while back, I was in Costa Rica at a small hotel. And there was a bookshelf with just a few paperback books, an American Hotel Registry book right there on this tiny little bookshelf. I'm like, oh, my gosh, that's right down the street from me, in the middle of nowhere. But yeah, this is a great place to live. We have so much to be thankful for. And we'll miss you. Thanks.
Any other, other citizens wishing to address the board? Okay. Well, I was thinking they may want to talk about after we.
After we do that.
Yeah, yeah. Then we have a. Yeah. It's all good. We have a proclamation. Hang on one second. We have a proclamation. Twenty-twenty-one proclamation declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares that the first Friday in June to be the National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the village of Vernon Hills, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence. Every day, more than one hundred Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than two hundred thirty who are shot and wounded. And on average, there are more than thirteen thousand gun homicides every year. Americans are twenty-five times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. Illinois has fourteen hundred gun deaths every year with a rate of eleven deaths per one hundred thousand people. Illinois has the thirty-sixth highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in one hundred twenty-seven cities. Cities and towns across the nation, including Vernon Hills, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. Protecting public safety in the communities they serve is a mayor's highest responsibility. Support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. Mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. By wearing orange on June fourth, two thousand twenty-one, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. We renew our commitment to gun, reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help our, keep our children safe. Now therefore be proclaimed that Mayor Roger Byrne of the village of Vernon Hills declares the first Friday in June, June fourth, two thousand twenty-one, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and encourages all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives dated this first day of June, two thousand twenty-one. And I might add, it, it is not in conflict with the Second Amendment as the liberals at the NRA like to tell us. A conservative reading of the Second Amendment starts with the words "well-regulated" and "has" since the Constitution was written. So a conservative, this supports a conservative view of supporting the Second Amendment, that, that weapons should be well-regulated. Any other comments from, any board members of that? Did you wish to make any comments to people that brought this to us? Any follow-up comments?
Just thank you very much.
Unfortunately, people, people at home have to hear you, so.
Okay. Tanya Reback, two oh four Ashland Court. You're in VH.
Elise Houtman, Sterling Heights Road, Vernon Hills.
And we just want to thank you for signing this proclamation and reading it so eloquently, Mr. Byrne. Thank you very much.
Anyone who's interested in joining us, we are going to do a five K by Elise Houtman's rules, which means eh, as much as you can put into it and you walk at a slow pace. Saturday morning, nine-thirty a.m., we're going to meet at the corner of Lakeview and Fairway. It's whoever wants to come out, just take a walk around the lake, just recognizing people, victims of suicide, homicide, just accidental shootings, et cetera. Just want to take a little time to enjoy the beautiful outdoors while also recognizing people that have lost loved ones. And we are greatly, greatly appreciative of all of you guys for supporting this. We've worked with a lot of you, you know, over the years, and we're really very appreciative. So thank you so much for recognizing.
Are you, are you going to be selling the T-shirts or?
If you want one, you can always contact me. But we're not selling anything. It's truly just a gathering for whoever wants to come out. People are still very hesitant with COVID, and we don't want anyone being uncomfortable. Bring your mask, bring your water bottle, don't bring a mask, it's outside, and just a nice stroll to enjoy the beauty that we have to offer at Century Park.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Do you have a proclamation next?
Yes, we do, but it's unsigned right now. We, we have to get.
Take it and just have our orange people stand with you?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Sure. Sure.
Yeah, then you could take the picture and post it and.
If you don't mind.
Let you open it. Oh, is there nothing?
It's in the inside. Yeah. Oh, I thought you wanted, oh, let's take a picture.
They want to take a picture.
Well, here, I'll let you, I'll let you hold it up. We'll let you hold it up. Let me get this. Oh, yeah, the sign here. Take the sign here thing, yeah. Say it's not signed. Okay, Village Manager, Declaration twenty-one dash eleven.
Yes, sir. Just a reminder that Mayor Byrne will be signing Declaration twenty-one dash eleven, which extends the state of the emergency in Vernon Hills for, till the next board meeting in conjunction with the governor's state of emergency. Hopefully, this will be the last one. Hopefully.
Okay. Chief, you wanted to comment on something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and to the village board. I just wanted to provide an update. You may recall back in January, there was a criminal justice reform bill passed. And I shared with the village board some concerns about some of the conditions that that bill was going to establish, some of those starting as early as July one, two thousand twenty-one. We, as an association, the Illinois Chiefs of Police and other groups began working with other stakeholders to help identify some of the unintended consequences that was in that bill. The bill was seven hundred and fifty-some pages. A lot of good things were in that bill, and we, we all certainly recognized that and understood that. But in the manner that it was put together, there were some, some language issues, some need to clean up some language. And I'm happy to say that last night at about eleven p.m., the Illinois House passed, and only hours after the Senate had passed, House Bill three four four three, Senate Amendment five, which is known as the Trailer Bill, which specifically was designed to address a lot of those unintended consequences. More importantly, what that means for us as a village and us as a police department is some of the key concerns I had, had to do with the use of body cameras going forward. And I'm pleased to say that all of my concerns were addressed in this trailer bill, that there will be no need for us to, to greatly modify the use of our body cameras. There were other improvements put forth in this trailer bill that were all, again, nothing really changed the spirit of this reform bill, but really cleaned up to make sure we had a proper understanding of what the law was designed and meant to do. So appreciate everyone's support. I know there were a number of member, a number of people in the community, certainly a lot of police department employees concerned about this going into effect July one. And I'm very pleased to say that assuming Governor Pritzker will act favorably on this and sign it, we've got a good solution. More work to be done. There will be other trailer bills, but the ones that, the, the elements that go into effect July one, this all addresses. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. President, also, I'd like to recognize the initiative and leadership that Chief Kreese demonstrated during this project. He was one of the original chiefs who got out in front of this, who helped organize the Lake County Chiefs and the Illinois Chiefs, and has been one of the driving forces behind these changes, which were really well-needed. And I know he's been on the phone daily, sometimes for hours, including late into the night last night and most nights in the last week, as this trailer bill was coming to a head. And I would just like to say thank you for all the work that he did on this.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. And, and I would be remiss to not share with the board the real support I felt from our three elected officials. Both our state reps and our senator were very engaged. I had numerous conversations with them, meetings with them, with fellow chiefs. I was communicating with them right up until the time of the vote. And I'm pleased to say that even though there was a lot of partisanship, that all of our reps, both of our reps and our senators supported and, and voted for this trailer bill. So I really appreciate their support and just thought you should know that they were, they were always very willing of their time, communicative, shared our concerns with the bill sponsors and other members. And I think that's all we can ask for from our elected officials. So, thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else? Anybody on staff? No? Okay. Then I think the next item is the omnibus vote agenda? Is there a motion to approve items A through E? So made. Motion second. Any comments, question, concerns about any of that?
I just want to ask about item C in terms of the sirens. How many, is, is this the last of the sirens that needs replacement?
I, I think there's one more.
One more.
Next year, and that'll be the final one, to have them all modernized to the latest standards. Yes, sir.
Were there five total, six?
There's five or six. And I, I'm sorry, my partner in crime isn't here because he's got a much better memory for these things. But yes, there, there's five or six. I think there's five.
I can tell you they worked very well. The first Tuesday in May just happened to be the day that Fireman Tony was over giving a demonstration with the sprinkler trailer that, that they use at school. And we had a class outside at ten a.m. watching that when everything started going off. And they were, they were very effective. Good, good. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. If there's no other comments, a roll call, please.
President Byrne, Trustees Markport.
Aye.
Forster.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Schenck.
Aye.
Motion carries. No unfinished additional business? All right. Then new business, approval and passage of Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero-one-five, a resolution granting approval to operate an outdoor special event for Fantasy Amusement Company located at one twenty-two Hawthorne Center.
Thank you. I can give you a brief summary. This is, you know, as the board is aware, same company, same location as in past years, except, except the first, last year. It'll be at Hawthorne Mall. It will be on the west side of the mall, however, in the area between J.C. Penney's and Macy's. They normally operate on the east side of the mall. And obviously, there's no room over there with the construction activity that's going on. For this year, the carnival would take place from Thursday, June tenth, through Sunday, June thirteenth. The hours of operation would be Thursday, six to ten p.m., Friday, six to eleven p.m., Saturday, two to eleven p.m., and finally, Sunday, two to ten p.m. The event application and plan are attached to your packet. You can also see the plan in front of you on your screen. And if the board feels the temporary use is appropriate, then a motion approving the resolution attached to your packet is recommended, subject to the conditions that are outlined in that resolution. And the owner of Fantasy Amusements is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Bill Johnson, how are you? So last year, we did not work at all, unfortunately, obviously. So we opened last weekend. We were supposed to open Friday, and the weather was bad. So I had to wait one more day. I already waited nineteen months. One more day didn't hurt anything. And we, we actually had a good crowd Saturday. I, I took a picture of the girl that was buying the first ticket and the first time in nineteen months. So the good thing is, last year at this time, I was heading to Yellowstone. So something good came out of not working.
Anybody have any question? Oh, Trustee Schenck.
So with all your employees, are they, in regards to COVID, will your, how do you mitigate it with your employees? Obviously, the residents or the people attending the carnival, it's going to be their call. I don't know if there's a limit that they, we can have, but what are your, what do you plan for your employees?
With the area we have and with the bridge right now, we think we could have as many as two thousand people, which I know we won't have. As far as vaccinations, some of us have gotten both, some of them have gotten one, and some of them right now do not want to get any. My employees are wearing, I would say, most of them are wearing masks. If you want me to have everyone wear a mask, I will. But the ones that got vaccinated, including myself, I didn't wear a mask. I, I've had enough. You know, fourteen days turned into fourteen months. And I'm, but I will do whatever you tell me I have to do. But, you know, we have, we have, actually, every ride has hand sanitizer on it, and I have signs, you know, distance and wear a mask. Most people attending actually where we are now, half and half wear a mask.
Sure. And I understand, and, and, you know, in my opinion, because, you know, we don't have, we're not having a Fourth of July parade, which will be after your event. And I, you know, because of COVID, we want to make sure everybody's safe. And we just want people to feel safe.
Right.
We want people to attend the event and enjoy themselves. So I, in my opinion, I think whatever you can do to make the carnival goers feel as safe as possible, but I think that's a.
This, this past weekend, we didn't even have, and nobody actually came up to the office, myself, my wife, my daughter, to say anything about the conditions that we had there. So I, I, you know, I think, I think we're trying to be as safe as possible.
So other than the, the hand sanitizer, are you, do you have, how, you know, any plans for sanitizing the rides?
We, yeah. Each, each ride operator has a spray. It's Episyn. It's, I think it's what it is. It's a little tablet. And we, we have a thirty-two-ounce spray bottle. We're not doing it after every ride, but every couple rides before we open, we, then we'll spray them down. We do not wipe it down. We spray it. It actually, it, it, it's fast. I, I guess I could have brought that, what we have, but it, it dries very, very quick.
Any other members have?
Well, I would just like to suggest that if not all of your employees are vaccinated, and you don't even know which ones, or you may or may not know which ones are, I would say that they should wear masks. It should require everyone to wear a mask unless everyone can show that they're.
That they are vaccinated.
That they're not, unless the whole team is vaccinated.
Right.
And nobody's vaccinated.
Yeah. And I, and I know some that are not vaccinated, and they did wear a mask all last week. I know that they, they did not, they, they, as of now, they're not getting vaccinated unless if I have to.
So maybe.
They, they do wear a mask.
So I'm, I'm not asking that you mandate that they get vaccinated, which would be my personal preference that you did, but maybe peer pressure with the ones who are vaccinated and have to wear masks because their buddies are not wearing.
Yep.
Not vaccinated. Maybe that will, that will go some way. So, so it'd be my preference to say that.
Wearing a mask.
That everyone's wearing a mask there.
Unless that they're vaccinated, fully vaccinated.
No, no, no. Everybody. All your employees are wearing a mask.
Tell everybody, wear a mask all the time. What about, I've been vaccinated, so do I have to wear a mask all the time?
Well, unless you're, are you going to be working there at the event?
I'm, I'm always walking around.
So.
I would think that's a lead-by-example type scenario.
Right. So you can say, you know, once everyone on the team is fully vaccinated, then, then, then we can stop. But until then.
All right.
That'd be my preference. I don't know.
Would that.
So it'd be a motion to approve, subject to the conditions that are outlined in the packet, and with an added condition that all employees wear a mask during the entire hours of operation of the carnival.
If any of them are unvaccinated, correct? If any are unvaccinated.
I heard all.
No, everyone.
No, right, but that's just. If any single person is unvaccinated, then everyone wears a mask.
Right.
So basically, everyone wears a mask because they, by definition, they won't be vaccinated.
Right, correct. Because there is a time.
There isn't time.
Right.
And that's going to be too hard for you to keep track of who is and who isn't.
Right.
I, I know, right now, I know who is. I definitely know who is, and I know who has gotten the first shot. Because we, we took them over to get their first shot. And I do know two employees that will not get vaccination.
Right.
And they, they wore a mask all last week.
But the ones who had their first shot are not vaccinated either, that.
Right. They're not fully vaccinated. They got one shot. But they, 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 they did wear a mask last week. They, they wore a mask. They were running rides with.
So how, how many employees are fully vaccinated and they're two weeks out from their second dose?
Off the top of my head, let me give that some thought. Eight or ten.
Out of how many?
Thirty, maybe thirty-five.
So, so only a small proportion of you really are fully vaccinated.
Well, actually, some, my, some of my employees have, have not had the time to get the second shot yet.
Right. But the point is, until you're two weeks out from the second shot, it's as if you were never vaccinated at all in terms of medical.
Right, 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 right.
So only a small proportion of your employees really are fully vaccinated. So I think it's a good idea to.
Correct.
Make sure everyone is wearing a mask.
To be clear, the condition would be, the additional condition would be all employees must wear a mask.
And it's so noted, and I'll make sure that's included in the resolution that's ultimately signed approving the event. All employees.
I disagree that if I'm vaccinated, that I should wear a mask. I'm sorry. I don't think it's right.
No.
I mean, I went into Costco, and then you walk into Costco, if you've been vaccinated, they don't even ask, but you don't have to wear a mask. And that's inside. I'm outside. So I would, I would prefer, and I know you probably won't like that, but I really don't want to wear my mask anymore.
I get it.
And, and I've been fully vaccinated. I mean, if I could prove that they've been vaccinated.
I totally understand what you're saying, but I wear, as a substitute teacher, I wear my mask all day, every day.
My two daughters are teachers also, and they.
And, and I wear my mask every day, all day.
Inside or outside or what? You take a walk around the block and you wear a mask?
I'm talking inside.
Okay, I'm talking. Now, this is outside.
I understand, but you have thought, you're saying, you're saying you're going to have thousands of people there.
Yeah.
And, and Costco is not in Vernon Hills, so I don't care what they do.
Right. Well, that's the difference.
We would prefer, we would prefer to err on the side of caution.
This, I don't think this is about, this is more about protecting our residents. And this is probably the largest event we're having since COVID started, public, public outing. You're the first one to draw. Okay? And, and we understand your opinions. We all have our opinions too on how, on when not wear masks. But. But as, for your business to succeed over there, you don't want to give the impression that you don't care that, hey, we're just rolling out of COVID and just kind of arguing that we shouldn't wear a mask is not the correct path. I think the correct path is, we're here to keep you safe, so you guys have a good time. And instead, so putting our opinions about the mask aside, I think you have to look at the bigger picture of you're there to provide a service to our residents and other people coming in from town. And we want to make sure that they feel safe.
Especially since this is going to involve a lot of kids.
Who are not vaccinated.
Who are not vaccinated, correct.
Right. And we still do see kids who are getting COVID. It's happening. So they spread it to your employee, who spreads it to other people. It can, it can happen. We don't want to become a super spreader event, especially since we're not having our own events.
Okay. Anything else from Boardrooms?
No, motion approved with the additional condition regarding the masks. That would be the motion.
Your motion so made?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
President Byrne. Trustees Marport.
Aye.
Forster.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Shane.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other new business or communication to come forward to the board? Anybody? No?
So that said. Fourth of July. So how many, how many vendors do we have that come from out of town? What would it take to do like a mini?
As I understand it, the American Legion is already planning on doing a very, very mini.
Yeah. I know I'm putting up a.
Like they did last year with just four or five guys, but I don't know.
But. Is there?
You wouldn't be able to throw it together.
You know, what we would have is you'd have like the baseball teams and soccer teams.
Right.
And that's about it. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have any bands because the bands are all from out of town.
Right. But you can still have, yeah, baseball teams, soccer teams, local businesses, the.
And again, the issue, the issue is not the actual who we can get. It's how many people it draws and how closely they pack together along the. Because it's a narrowly defined parade route. And I know you've been through the parade route before, and you see people are from.
Especially in the corners, there, you know.
Man, everywhere. They're from the edge of the curb, sometimes in the street, out past the sidewalk into the yards.
Does that meet, though, the bridge or even, or if, I mean, because there's a chance we can go to Level 5 in the next two weeks or so? I know it's a chance still. I'm just wondering, is there like a way to say, hey, we're at Level 5 now? Yeah. And I know the whole thing in terms of getting everyone lined up is, that's a big deal and everything. I just don't know if there's any possible way or if it's just too much.
It would be a lot of work to try to pull that off in a very short period of time.
The fireworks, though. What's the plan for the fireworks? Are they allowed to go to the park? Will they be?
Yeah, fireworks are fine because you have a huge area. There's going to be no.
There'll be no restrictions.
Right, open no restrictions because the fireworks are launched from the island. People can park in, you know, dozens of different places. They can walk in. The park is large enough. People can space out. There's no, we don't have entertainment, so there's nothing to draw people to a particular area. Whereas normally, when we do, we do entertainment, people pack up around the stage. They set up their blankets and chairs and everything for fireworks, and everyone's all packed into a tight crowd. This way, they can see it from anywhere in the park.
Would it be something a little more conducive to do something for that night or that early evening to kind of feel more like a celebration besides just fireworks?
That's what we're trying not to do, is not to do anything that draws everyone back together into a tight group. Because there's no, there's no reasonable way to walk through the crowd and make people stay six feet apart. There's no controlled access points at the park. So people could come in from anywhere.
That's assuming we're still in the bridge, though. If we're at, if we go to Level 5, then.
That's restore, right?
Then it's fully, fully open.
Yeah, if you go to, if you go to Level 5 or Phase 5, then we're wide open.
Could, could we have a backup of a DJ or something like that? So.
Well, then you're talking about getting a tent and some type of a electrical system, sound system out there for the DJ. He probably has his own. We can check into it. I'm just not sure because most people have signed contracts and made plans to be somewhere.
Or somewhere.
And we canceled all of our contracts.
Right, right. I get that.
So I mean, if your daughter has a boombox and wants to play CDs.
I'll. Spotify for three hours.
Are you thinking like, allow it to just open it up earlier? Just have like picnics in the park kind of thing and then just?
My guess is people are going to do that anyway.
Encourage?
Yeah, my guess is people are going to do that anyway.
What about beverages or beer, soda, food?
That's not allowed.
Nothing? It's not going to happen?
Unless we have a closed off area.
Yeah, that, there's a whole, there's a whole lot of restrictions that go along with that and that licensed distribution by the state.
Right.
I know Lincolnshire is doing their Fourth of July parade, but they're not doing fireworks. So I think there might be some crossover. Like, my band is actually in that parade because we weren't having one here. So, but our plan is go to that parade and then come back for our fireworks and bring everybody with them.
Well, cancel them and come to ours. Problem solved.
Yeah, I don't know. But. Let me turn my mic on.
I still have a band.
But they take the summer off and they don't play here. You've never, that's why you've never seen them in our, in our parades. We don't have any of the local schools in our parades.
You're right.
So they take the summers off and go to band camp and do what they do.
Bring band camp here?
Okay. And then.
I would recommend being safe one more, for one more month.
One year.
One more month. Because when we get, we get into the summer here, we get into July and stuff, then we're moving like towards Rib Fest. And everyone has, you know, has been concerned that we canceled Summer Cell. And while technically that's true, essentially what we've done is we've just moved it off a few weeks. We moved it off, for safety sake, out about five weeks till the end of August. And it's being done in conjunction with Rib Fest, where we're adding to the park district's coffers, making contribution to do the better entertainment, making a larger event. And we're donating our fireworks display that would have been for Summer Cell. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to relay the message that we haven't canceled everything that we're doing. We've just moved it off to what we thought was safe at the time.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else? All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn and go to Committee of the Whole. Are we?
There is no closed session.
No closed session, okay.
So made.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole meeting to order. First item is approval of the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of May 18th, 2021.
Mr. President, we'll need a motion to appoint your president pro tem.
Oh, yes, sorry.
For this meeting as well. Actually, I would like to call.
Yes.
I would like to call the June 1st, 2021 Vernon Hills Committee of the Whole meeting to order. Roll call, please.
President Byrne. Trustees Cook.
Here.
Marport.
Here.
Oppenheim.
Here.
Shane.
Here.
Forster.
Here.
Takaoka.
Here.
We have a quorum, and now we need a motion to appoint a president pro tem.
Motion to appoint.
Don't look at me, him.
Oh. Motion to appoint. Trustee Cook for president, stand in.
Second.
We have a motion is second. If there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
President Byrne. Trustees Cook.
Aye.
Marport.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Shane.
Aye.
Forster.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you. Now, our first item is approval of the Committee of the Whole minutes from the meeting of May 18th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments, questions, corrections, additions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
President Byrne. Trustees Cook.
Aye.
Takaoka.
Aye.
Shane.
Aye.
Forster.
Aye.
Marport.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item and only item on tonight. Bhop Esports, 122 Hawthorne Center. Consideration of a report and recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval of a special use permit to allow an arcade for electronic games for the operation of an esports gaming center at Hawthorne Mall. And I know you, sir, but would you reintroduce yourself to us?
My name is Joe, formerly 600 Avon Court, now 1125 Museum Boulevard. I live right across from the mall, so it's pretty good. Yeah, very convenient. I'm not facing the mall, thankfully, so I don't need to stare at work in my entire life, you know?
Okay, Mike?
Thank you. And I think the board recalls the petitioner, Joe, from his concept presentation. The e-gaming establishment would be in the space that was formerly occupied by the skate room in the wing, in the J.C. Penney's wing. This type of use requires a special use permit. And the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on May 19th to consider their request for that special use permit. Overall, the commissioner, the commission was very supportive of their request. They felt that the use was appropriate for the mall and would be a complimentary use that would help drive additional traffic to the mall. The recommendation on a unanimous vote to the board is to approve the special use